All right, thank you, Councilwoman Eason.
Excuse me, Council President, since you just started recording, can you just make a notation that all council persons are present?
The Council Clerk is also recording and taking the minutes, so it's there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. One more is joining, okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move, adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Haring. And Councilman Williams for adopting the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the item of business, the legislation.
We got a vote, Madam President.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's been a long week, I'm sorry. Council Clerk, would you take the call for the agenda, to adopt the agenda?
Yes ma'am, Councilwoman Eason?
Yes.
Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Seven in agreement.
All right. Now we'll move into the legislation. Let's see, thirty-eight and, no, thirty-three in attendance, okay. We'll move into the legislation, Council Clerk, would you read the legislation, please?
Yes, ordinance O dash zero four twenty twenty-one. Sponsor, James Herring Councilman, co-sponsor Carolyn Smallwoods, Councilwoman, Public Hearing, November nineteenth, twenty twenty. Session, special, regular meeting, date of introduction, December eleventh, twenty twenty. Emergency ordinance to amend the city of Glen Arden's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Whereas the mayor presented the city council the annual budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, but no annual budget was adopted by the city council on or before the second Monday in June of fiscal year twenty twenty. And whereas the set tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is point three five seven nine per one hundred dollars assessed value. Whereas the set, the personal property tax rate at point eighty-three per one thou- one hundred dollars assessed value. And whereas pursuant to section eight zero seven C of the city charter, there had been no annual budget adopted on or before the second Monday in June of fiscal year twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one was deemed adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty as if it had been enacted by ordinance until the council adopts a new budget. And then therefore be ordained by two-thirds majority, the council of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this eleventh day of December twenty twenty, that one, that the city budget, the city's budget for twenty twenty-one being hereby is amended to substitute the revenues and expenditures by line item as shown in the city budget attached here too as exhibit A and incorporated here, here when, herein by reference and summarized below and to appropriate funds for the purpose set forth therein. Summary of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Revenues, local taxes, three, three million two hundred twenty-eight, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Licenses and permits, two hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. Enter government, intergovernmental, ninety-six thousand, one dollar. Service charges, five hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Inter-fund transfers, one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred. Other, one hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight. Total, four million, three hundred ninety-eight dollars, twenty and twenty-nine dollars. Expenses, administration, four hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. Legal, sixty thousand dollars. Cable, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. Legislative, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and nine hundred and sixty-eight. Finance, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven. Executive, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. Public safety, one million, four hundred fifty-five thousand and six dollars. Code enforcement, ninety-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. Public works, five hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seven. General operations, one million, two hundred ninety thousand, five hundred and twenty-three. Debt services, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twelve. Other, fourteen thousand, seven hundred. Total, four million, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and, excuse me, four million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars. Surplus deficit, zero. Special revenue fund, state police grant, revenue, sixty thousand. Expenditures, sixty thousand. Subtotal budget surplus deficit, zero. Paid grant, forty-eight thousand. Expenditures, subtotal budget surplus deficit, seven thousand, five hundred. Feed camera photo enforcement, revenue, thirty thousand. Expenditures, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty. Subtotal budget surplus deficit, two hundred eighty dollars. Nutritional site, revenue, eleven thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars. Expenditures, subtotal budget surplus deficit, zero. Corona relief, I'm sorry, coronavirus relief fund, revenue, three hundred seventy-eight thousand. Expenditure subtotal budget surplus deficit, zero. Total surplus deficit, all special revenue funds, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Capital projects funds. Finance sources, general fund surplus, five hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three. General fund surplus, police cars, one hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred twenty-one. S H A funds, prior year, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-one. Highway user revenue, one hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two. Open space grants, one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred. Energy grant, fifty thousand. Total financing sources, one million, two hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Expenditures, capital hole, new installation, one thousand dollars, I'm sorry, one hundred thousand dollars. Generator, ten thousand dollars. Support equipment, two police cars, upfitting and radios, one hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one. Electrical work in the gold room, twenty-one thousand. Elevator project, two hundred and fifty thousand. Repave parking lot at municipal center, seventy-five thousand. M L K park renovations, one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred. New carpet for upper level hallway, ten thousand. Support equipment, H V A C, fifty thousand. Electric, electric car rent finance, fifty thousand. City sidewalk construction and A D A compliance, thirty-five thousand. Ward three street repairs, two hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Operating transfer, highway user to general fund, forty thousand. Total capital projects expenditures, one million, one hundred sixty dollars, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-eight. Subtotal capital projects budget surplus deficit, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine. Total budget surplus, all governmental funds, ninety thousand, seven hundred sixty-two. Enterprise fund budget, operating revenues, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. Expenses, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty. Total budget surplus deficit, enterprise fund, eight hundred, eight hundred eighty dollars. Now therefore be it further ordained by the city council Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session on the eleventh day of December twenty twenty, that this ordinance and shall become effective immediately following approval by the mayor or passage by the council, council over the mayor's veto.
All right, thank you, Council Clerk. The legislation has been read, is there any discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Haring?
Yes, I move that we vote to accept this as an emergency ordinance.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I heard two voices.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. All right, Council Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Councilwoman Eason?
Before I vote, Ms. Jones, I know there was something that the treasurer needed to follow up on from the county to identify how much of the remaining, how much of the grant funds could be used?
I asked-
Documentation, was that done?
I asked him that question this afternoon, he said that, gave me an answer that seemed affirmative, but he's on here, Mr. Bratton, would you like to answer Councilwoman Eason? Because I did indicate to him, in talking to him this afternoon, that you, you required email documentation of the conversation.
Yep, I spoke with Amber Hendricks, she said the funds would still be available for the hazard pay.
You have that in writing?
Yes.
I'd like to receive that in writing, thank you.
So let me get, let me clarify this again, Mr. Bratton, you said that Amber Hicks said the money would be there for the hazard pay.
Well, that was a question that was raised, yes.
He said all the funds.
For the hazard pay, yes.
I would still like to see documentation. And so my vote is yes to make this an emergency, thanks.
Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Okay, Council Clerk, it's seven yeses to make this an emergency. All right, the next step is to vote for the legislation? Any, any discussion? Hearing none, Council Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Madam President?
Councilman Haring?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept ordinance zero four twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Council Clerk, would you take the vote?
Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, before I vote, I have a statement I'd like to make. I am not pleased that we had to schedule more than ten budget meetings to discuss the city budget that was due June thirtieth and is now almost six months overdue. However, I am pleased the funds for the city election in May twenty twenty-one are included for the citizens of Glen Arden. The three percent COLA salary increase is included for the city employees and the remaining COVID grant funds are included and can be expended for the city. I have two recommendations, the F Y twenty twenty-two budget be submitted to the council several months before the April fifteenth charter deadline, and if the city applies for any future grants, the city should designate a responsible administrator to develop and follow a plan. My vote is yes, thank you.
Council, Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
And before I make my vote, I also am kind of disappointed that we could not, we came to an agreement as far as getting some help in the Council Clerk's office, but now we, in order to do this, I, I just don't understand why we couldn't come to an agreement on something as small as getting help for a city employee. And it would have been done immediately by adding the council secretary into this budget. Of course, I voted no to take it out, but it didn't go, so with that said, yes. Council Clerk, you're muted.
Um, the, the vote was seven yeses.
All right.
Ms. Jones, before you move on?
Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, um, has the process been identified for Mr. Bratton to cut the checks for the employees who would be administered the hazard pay?
A process-
Identified?
I'm sorry, a process was identified, but I'm not sure if, what the procedure is for the treasurer's office at this, at this juncture, Mr. Bratton?
Yep, we can get the checks cut on Monday, that, we had discussed a mand- manual process, manual check process and or through A D P service. The manual check process would require, you know, the signatures and then also have to wait to get the council checks. The probably, the better way is the, just A D P direct, we get the checks the next day.
Mr. Bratton, let me ask you a question, isn't A D P a seven-day-a-week operation? They work seven days a week?
Business day, business day, next business day, which is Monday.
But they don't, they don't, I'm, I'm, okay, I understand next business day, but what I'm saying is A D P works seven days a week, so there's no way that we could, that that process could start tomorrow?
I don't think so, but I can check on that.
All right, thank you.
All right, so this legislation has passed, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is-
Madam President, before we move on?
Councilman Haring?
Yes, I, I think in the, in that budget also is money for P P E and it's way over the threshold, I'd like to ask that, I'd like to make a motion that we invoke section eight twenty-six of the city charter emergency exception to allow the chief of police, I mean, the acting city manager, Chief O'Donnell, and the treasurer to look for P P E's and if they can get them by the deadline, go ahead and get them. Eight twenty-six allows us to waive the bidding process, and I'd like to make a motion that we give them that authority to do that, to invoke that section.
My thought on that, Councilman Haring, is listening to the conversation today and working with them is that, in fact, Mr. Bratton just stated that Ms. Hendricks said that the, only the money for the hazard pay would be, be distributed.
Mr. Bratton?
No, but I just specifically requested information on the hazard pay, but the other, other monies are still available. Fund for P P E is available if we can complete the transaction.
I think that process will be a little lengthy considering it's going to, you're going to be doing checks on Monday and they have to have the paperwork by the fifteenth, which is the next day. How will we be able to purchase P P E within, on, on, in, on Monday? And get all of the paperwork and have it all ready to go for the, for the county to review? Their deadlines are still in effect.
Yes.
So, Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Can we pay for it, pay for them via A C H, which is next day payment?
Depends on the vendor, yeah, we may be able to pay for them through A C H.
All right, well, the motion is on the floor.
I'll second. And I said that, at least we should try.
Council Clerk?
Yes ma'am.
Would you take the vote?
Councilwoman Eason?
Epstein.
Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood? Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
I, I have a question, um, I'm still not, I'm clear on, um, the process with getting those checks cut for the hazardous pay. My thing is, um, would trying to work on that interfere with the process of getting those checks cut? Um, Mr. Bratton, you need to be more thorough than what you are, you just saying yes and no, you know we need definite information and you are not answering clear and it's really irritating. What I want to know is, will you be able to cut those twenty-three checks? Have all the information uploaded on time so they can get their checks? And get paid for, for their service, for working, you know, while we were shutting in, you know, in, in our, in our own homes? Will you be able to do that? I'm not satisfied with what you're saying about, um, what is the process? Because right now, I think that they should be paid, um, the police, public works, the, the bus driver, they need to be paid. Will that interfere?
No, we have no problem making sure they get paid.
Can you tell me again what is going to be the process and when are you going to cut the checks? Because you're saying that you're gonna, okay, so you're supposed to be, um, checking and see whether they will, you can start posting them checks on Saturday. Um, how will we know what the answer to that is? And then if you are going to process it on the fourteenth, will you be able to have all that done and uploaded, I mean, so we can meet the fifteenth deadline?
We can have it, we can meet the fifteenth deadline, yes.
And the other question I have is, once those checks are, are cut, when will the receivers get their, I mean, when would they be able to look to having that in their account or in their hand? What is the process to that?
On the fifteenth.
Okay, so my thing is, um, for me, the priority is getting those, those hazardous checks cut and, and, and if that's going to be, if that's not going to be a problem, then I don't have a problem with the P P E, but, um, the first priority for me is, is the, um, the checks being cut and, um, the fif- the fifteenth deadline being met and those, um, personnel receiving their checks in their account or in their hand.
Yeah, we got that under control.
Beg your pardon?
We have that under control.
Okay, well, I would like to know what the answer is on what you find out about Saturday, because, um, if, if they are available, if they're working on Saturday, we can, um, I would prefer you working on that on Saturday and not waiting till Monday. So we maybe can do a consensus on that as well, so, um, as long as it's not going to hinder, I don't have a problem with P P A, P P E being included. That would be yes.
Thank you, Council, for, Council Vice President Ferguson. Councilwoman Jones?
This one is, is difficult, because in watching today, the processes and the paperwork that Mr. Bratton was presenting, persons to get help in looking at P P E, they're looking at some P P E that has a, a date of September that was, it wasn't presented to the council, but someone developed it in September to get this P P E and I just don't, with all that they're trying to order, I just don't see all of that being done in a timely manner to meet the deadlines that the county has, so I'm going to have to abstain, abstain from this one also.
Thank you, so I have four yeses. Uh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Yes, so I have five, five yeses and two abstains.
Okay, so this means that the motion to try to include the P P E? Is that correct? This is a motion to include the P P E or have the, the acting city manager and Mr. Bratton try to locate P P E and have all this done by, when the paperwork is due?
Yes ma'am.
Acting city manager, Chief O'Donnell? Chief O'Donnell?
Yes ma'am.
Do you have an issue, I mean, is that, you understand what needs to be done on, I guess, on Monday?
Yeah, we'll do the best we can.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, so now we'll move into citizens' comments and questions, which will be for five minutes, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and my first person is Ms. Fahy.
Hi, President Jones, thank you everyone, and thank you so much for all, for passing the budget finally. This has been a long time coming with a lot of meetings and a lot of participation. I do have a couple of questions or things to point out. The ordinance number for tonight's legislation is the same ordinance number as the one that Council President Jones introduced on November twenty-fifth, they are both zero four dash twenty twenty-one, so I don't know if they're supposed to be, but just pointing that out. The other thing is, the difference between the budget that was not passed and the budget that was passed today is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is a very small difference. And so I am disappointed that it took so long for us to get there, particularly because the delay in approving this budget is now introducing a scenario where we want to bypass the bidding process for P P E. As you should be aware, the FBI, you know, issued a warning earlier this year and several other times around the fraudulent, um, the potential for fraudulent sales in the P P and E space that, you know, needs to be taken into consideration. Many states, many governments have been duped by suppliers for P P E because they were not properly vetted and they were rushed. The knowledge of this grant for the P P E was known, um, way before this budget was approved, and that was- was known, um, way before this budget was approved, um, and that was, uh, you know, a point of contention in having the budget be delayed. So it is disappointing that it looks like no legwork was done, um, to prepare for the moment in which the budget was to be approved. And that now puts us at risk because now we're trying to rush a process that has, um, a high risk of fraud in it. Um, at the, you know, the expense of not having these grant funds appropriately used, grant funds that were hard fought for us by, you know, our elected officials, um, in other levels of government. So I think we need to be really careful with how we're going about, um, spending that money, particularly because there's already, um, you know, eyes on Glenn Arden for the fact that this budget was not passed timely. I'm aware that, you know, um, a letter was sent, um, that it's gone up all the way to Annapolis that, um, you know, other senators of the state know about this and consider this to be a blemish on Glenn Arden, the fact that this budget was not passed timely. So I, I think that you all need to be very careful in this process and make sure all your, your eyes are dotted and your Ts are crossed and that you don't end up in a situation where you choose a vendor that either does not actually supri- supply the materials or is, you know, um, an inappropriate vendor for us to be working with. Um, and again, the difference in the budget is so miniscule that it is disappointing that it took this long to kind of come to an agreement on it. Um, also, I'm, I've been made aware of a letter, I've seen a copy of a letter that was sent to citizens um, regarding the, uh, allocation of the ward representation and, um, I guess it was sent to the people who signed the petition back in two thousand and seventeen, but that letter references a citizen of Glenn Arden, someone who is not in a public official capacity. And I think that's very inappropriate, particularly because people are questioning who this person is, which, you know, we don't know what kind of, um, danger that puts that person in and the fact that it was done on, um, city letterhead puts the city at risk that, you know, if this person wants to sue, the city is now at risk for this because, you know, this was done and it was only signed by three council members. So I'm not even sure what the protocol is for sending out items to, you know, citizens on Glenn Arden city letterhead. I think I'm at my five minutes, so.
All right, yes. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Beck?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now, yes.
President, um, Chairman Jones, thank you, uh, council members for, uh, passing the budget tonight. And to echo some of Erica's previous statements, um, the, the twenty-four thousand seven twenty-three that was mentioned as a, as being the amount, the difference in the budget that we, that, that was discussed on the twenty-third of November. My question, um, what since, were this, and this, I didn't hear any substantive, substantial changes or substantive changes from the budget that was submitted on the twenty-third and the one that was passed tonight. Can you share with the, um, and I guess total was four, four million, four twenty-two, seven fifty-two, can you share with the citizens of Glenn Arden? What the holdup was from the twenty-third? Because it seems like this could have been passed a, a long time ago. Uh, am I missing something? Thank you.
Mr. Bratton?
I don't have those changes in front of me.
Is there a mechanism that you could, um, that's, at later date, disseminate the information?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Bratton, our, our suggestion would be, uh, you could get the information and on the regular meeting on Monday, you could read that in your, as part of your report. Uh, Mr. Uh, Thomas? What is it? T H O M A? Or Ricky?
Well, I just say I want, uh, uh, good evening, uh, Madam President and Council Members, Members. Um, I just have one, uh, question for, well, anyway, uh, I, I really appreciate our councilmen's working together to get this emergency budget passed, which it takes almost over six months. Well, I'm so glad. So, round of applause. Anyway, uh, this question is referred to Mr. Bratton. This, the city employees are in desperate need, but I want to re- uh, refer to this question. Do Mr. Bratton has a backup plan, does someone that helps him, do he have an assistant to, to get this, this work done? I mean, tomorrow, I mean, it's Saturday, but, you know, um, do he have someone to help him with this?
Yeah, we've, we, we've been working on that. Um, I have two awesome employees in my office.
So you, so you do have two, you do have two employees that, that, um, familiar with, with the, um, uh, payroll budget and all that sort of stuff?
Yeah, two employees in the fir- finance office.
Okay, Mr. Bratton, I, I applaud you to, if, if, if you would please, please work hard to get this thing done because they are really, really counting on you. It's been delayed for months. Now, they could have had this, this, um, this, um, this budget pass and this could have been done. So if if you could just work in some overtime and, um, uh, you would make a lot of people happy. Can we count on you, Mr. Bratton?
We got it under control.
I can't, I, I said, can we count on you?
We got it under control. You can count on me.
Thank you, sir. That's all I need to know. Y'all heard that? So let's, let's, let's get it done. Mr. Bratton, also.
No, no, hold on a second.
If, Mr. Bratton, also, if you need help, please ask Council President, President to assist you, anyone to assist you. Please don't, don't delay anything. You have questions. Okay? All right, thank you.
Uh, I think, um, Ms. Cat had her hand up next, and then Mr. Curtis, I'll come back to you.
Okay, um, thank you, Council President. I want to, um, basically echo what others have stated. Um, um, but I just would like to go on public record and say that I celebrate the passing of this budget. Thank you. And I celebrate the council finally reaching a compromise. But at the same time, I do want to formally express my discontent in this process taking so long. Holding a city and its fund hostage for a name for certain things like a name change of a position is beyond comprehension, be- beyond comprehension. I am also incensed and I want to state I would appreciate counsel for the record focusing on the budget or should have been focused on the budget rather than wasting tax-paying dollars to send a malicious letter referenced by Ms. Fahy that I too have been, have been made aware of. In my opinion, sending a letter out to settle personal vendettas, and I don't even know if Mr. Arroyo is on this call and I think I saw him somewhere, but if, whether he is or he's not, I know it's being recorded, I'm pretty sure he will check on this. People who do know me or know that I know Mr. Arroyo Montgomery, sometimes I agree with him, a lot of times I don't, but at the same time, we are adults and we agree to disagree. Sending a letter out, and I'm specifically speaking to three council members, um, I believe the letter is from Council, uh, Woman Wilson, Councilwoman Smallwood and Council Man, Councilman Herring. Sending a letter to settle a personal vendetta is malicious, it's disrespectful, and the fact that you stated Mr. Arroyo's name in this letter was done in the spirit of divisiveness because you stated where he lived. Let me be very clear. I live on Swan Wing Court, which is in Woodmore Town Center, but I also represent as a Glenn Arden citizen Fulton Street. I represent all of Glenn Arden Parkway. I represent all of Glenn Arden as a citizen. And to know that certain things were placed in there saying that Mr. Arroyo Montgomery was just one citizen who the council, you know, went and backed or something along those lines was to me done in a spirit of divisiveness because the thing that was stated in there regards to the ward representation, I too stated that I was in support of the ward change because it's not fair, in my opinion. So in, as far as I am concerned, I would like to go on record and state that it was totally unprofessional, the fact that someone who is not a public official who used the public comments forum to express themselves as a concerned citizen, whether we agreed with him or not, had his name mentioned in a letter as if he was a public official. And so for me, right now, as a resident who is speaking to everyone during this public comment section, um, session, I would like to know, should I wait and see my name published somewhere in a letter? Because I will tell you this, I don't know what Mr. Arroyo Montgomery is doing, but I will tell you this, if I see Kathleen Jeanette Guillaume Delamar's name even close to being misspelled or mentioned in a letter, you will hear from my attorneys.
Thank you, Mrs. Delmar. Um, Mr. Curtis?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Can hear you, yes.
Okay, um, well, I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate, uh, the budget being passed. Um, a few concerns though, uh, so, um, I know I, I'm in the finance industry and we recently had a, a new employee. Uh, we all work remotely now and, um, I know that it is possible to start the process, the payroll process of cutting checks, even if you do it in a, um, in a, you know, a third-party system, to still run that process like we did and knowing that it's going to take a long time cutting a manual check and having that check come to the office so that that individual could get it in time. And in our specific case, I know the count, uh, the city can't do this, we had a courier take it to her house so she could have it before Thanksgiving. Uh, because we, you know, we understand the importance of people who have worked hard having, uh, their money in their hand as soon as possible. And if we're talking about police officers, public works, bus drivers and other city workers, this demands us going above and beyond to get the money in their hands. Um, like everyone said, it's taken a long time to get this passed. Uh, and I know that it's possible. I just worked with ADP, uh, we moved on to another system called AltiPro, but I know that it's possible to actually still process it, uh, through the system and it could get there on the fifteenth. Uh, but you can have these cut, these checks cut tomorrow. I know the throes of an audit, I'm in an audit right now, uh, but, you know, as a salaried employee, I and my staff have to do everything that we can do to make sure the books are closed on time and that, uh, information is in the right people's hand in a timely manner, including checks that people earn. So I, I encourage everyone, uh, Mr., everyone in your office, Mr. Bratton, to, uh, to look into that, to make sure that everyone gets paid, uh, before the fifteenth, uh, because it's that important. Um, uh, another thing, uh, that I wrote down after, um, the last meeting, which was very painful. Um, and I'm not referencing anybody, I can't call anybody out, I'm just calling what I see. Uh, as I understand, and I've only been a resident for almost three years, that every city council member here is at large. So nobody is representing, uh, a ward or a certain demographic. Everybody on the council is supporting and working for all of the citizens of Glenn Arden. And ma- doing that makes all of you a team. And what I've witnessed in the past few meetings that, that this, you guys aren't operating as a team. Uh, uh, for example, in the last meeting, um, we couldn't vote on a budget because the budget, the meeting was set up, it wasn't set up as a special meeting. And it seems like people are waiting for other people to fail, not understanding that if one council member fails, the citizens of Glenn Arden fail, the whole council fails. So I encourage you guys to stop, you know, pointing fingers, stop going after vendettas. The, I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic, over two hundred, close to three hundred thousand people have lost their lives across this nation, not to even mention worldwide. People are working hard. I see our police officers driving up and down the street, going and coming, putting their lives in danger. Our citizens deserve more. Our citizens deserve you guys working as a team to accomplish the work of the people of the city in Glenn Arden. I played basketball and I, no, no championship could have been won if all five players were on different pages. It took us working as a team to accomplish our goals and I encourage you guys to do the same because you're not looking out for one person or a different neighborhood or one street. You're all at large and you're all working for every citizen of Glenn Arden. So I encourage you for the, I don't know, the rest of time we have, um, uh, during your term, I don't know how long that is, but to throw all this pettiness aside and work hard to get things done. Last point is, um, it may not be for everybody, but, um, you know, I've ordered PPE for my company, I use Amazon business account. Um, and I got my receipts the exact same day. So I can go online literally right now, order masks, order gloves, order everything and get my receipt right now so that if I was in Mr. Bratton's shoes, can order it and submit it tonight or tomorrow, but I would not wait till the fifteenth in case there's a system failure or computer failure, power outage, I don't know. But you guys need to work hard. Amazon Business has a lot of that stuff. And I, I hope that, I think that as a city, you should have preference. Uh, but you can have all that supporting documentation ready, submit it to the portal so you guys can be reimbursed. So I look forward to you guys working as a team to, to get, um, the work of the city, uh, done in a more timely manner than I've witnessed over the past few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Mr. Aurora?
Good evening, Council President and Council Members and citizens alike. Um, I've heard the comments about the letter that was circulated this evening. Um, but I, for my personal reasons, I will not comment on that letter. But I do want to express my gratitude to the council for finally coming to an agreement on the budget and passing it for the betterment of the citizens of Glenn Arden. It is, however, unfortunate that this agreement only comes after fourteen meetings since September. Um, the loss of approximately sixty percent of a three hundred and seventy-eight thousand COVID grant and endless hours sacrificed by the citizens of Glenn Arden who have, who have, at times have given up hours of their precious time to attend three-hour-long meetings that should realistically only take one to two hours at most. But because of all the bickering that goes on, citizens are subjected to hours of sugar honey iced tea circus shows. And it is further unfortunate that a city budget could not be voted on and passed until today because of personal disagreements amongst our council members. And to add further insult to injury, the budget approval did not almost happen today because is, it was being held hostage by James Herring, who only voted yes because council members agreed to the title change of a position. Not the proposed salary amount for the position, but the title change itself, which had no impact on the budget. And I repeat that, no impact on the budget. And, and it now amazes me how the names of two council members who have voted no for the budget for the past several months now have their names as sponsors for this ordinance in an alleged attempt to have citizens believe that they have saved the day, which is not the case. So in closing, let me remind the council members that as elected city officials, you have been elected to serve, not politic, on behalf of the citizens of Glenn Arden. And as you move forward with upcoming resolutions, remove yourselves from the equation and think only of the citizens of Glenn Arden. When working towards reaching an agreement, there should not be any, I want this, I want that, or else. The only thought you should have is what is best for the citizens of Glenn Arden. And I'll leave you with these words. A politician will boast and brag about, about- A politician will boast and brag about, about what he or she has done because they feed and live for the accolades, while a true servant will silently do what's best for those that he or she serves and silently reap their rewards from no other than God. Have a good evening and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aurora Montgomery.
You're welcome, Council President.
Okay, just a moment, Mr. Beck, let me make sure that everyone who's had an opportunity that wants to, let me go on the second page. Any other citizens' comments? Okay. All right, Mr. Beck, you have the last word.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly echo Mr. Aurora's comments regarding leadership politicians, you know, in, in acting on the best, the best interests of the citizens of Glenn Arden. We would think that you would want to be servant leaders. You know, leaders that, that put the citizens and the constituents ahead of their own egos. And, and, and this is something that a lot of us have witnessed in the, and especially in the past two or three years with this council, particularly, specifically in the past four weeks with this budget, because I just cannot fathom if we had a council, specifically three members, if they were servant leaders, this budget would have been passed a long time ago. But I think that a lot of soul searching and self inflection should, should happen on, on the sponsors of, of this, of this budget that we passed tonight. You guys are not sponsors of the budget. This is the people's budget, okay? And I guess your names are on it for whatever reason, but you're not servant leaders, okay? And I would think that if you had any modicum of decorum, you would not run again. You wouldn't embarrass yourselves again, because this has been embarrassment to the city of Glenn Arden and a personal embarrassment to you three. That's all I have to say. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wilson, just a second. This is a citizens' comments.
Yeah, I know, I'm getting ready to tell you something. Mr. Wilson was trying, wanted to make a comment, and you said that Mr. Beck was going to be the last one.
I didn't see Mr. Wilson's hand up when I looked at the second page. I did not see any.
He's on the, he's on a telephone. You won't see his hand up.
Okay, then he can, I think he can come in, speak for himself.
No, you said that Mr. Beck was the last person. That's what he heard.
Well, that's what he heard because of the fact I didn't see any indication that Mr. Wilson was on the line, but Mr. Wilson will have the last say. I still don't see where he is, but okay, I see down here on the second page at the very bottom, three oh one, four four oh, oh two two one, that should be Mr. Will, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson? I, I can't hear you, sir. No, I cannot. It's like you're, you're far away. Can you come up to the phone? Okay, now we're getting a lot of.
Okay, here, turn yours up. Here, use mine.
Okay, first thing, I don't think it was appropriate for you to give out my cell phone number, but since you did it, you did it. So I will set a couple of things straight. First thing, I don't hear no one talking about why we got to where we at now. If you call, the mayor didn't do his job in submitting the budget in a timely manner. When the budget was, came off the pads, the mayor vetoed. But nobody pointed fingers at that. Now, as far as D three council member, they have a responsibility to notify those citizens that signed the petition back in two thousand and seventeen, what the update is. And that's what they did. As far as Mr. Montgomery concerned, about his information given out, all they gave out was Woodmore, his name. He went to a public meeting for Woodmore and asked the council member to do it, make the changes to a wall, one council member representing one, two and three, and four at large. Then he came at a public meeting and he admitted that he wasn't one to ask for that. He said, and they listened to me. So let's set the record straight. And what they did, they have a right to do, simple plain, and not being, being personally, a personal attack, or being vicious, or none of that. They have the right to represent. Now, for you may clear, you didn't want to hear from them. You ignored them. They was irrelevant. You, you are going to do what you want. I listened to the last meeting, y'all had budget meeting, where Mr. Williams said, we need to, we need to compromise. And when thing was done, what they thought they had to compromise, you called for a consensus and just about everything they thought they compromised on, you, y'all voted for, you voted no and left the way it was. That's why we have in the, because y'all determined we're going to do it our way and you three don't be, are irrelevant. And they'd be doing a disservice to those citizens that support those three if they kept their mouth shut, simple plain. Yes, this budget could have been done a long time ago. You even had to go out to get on TV, on, on the channel and accuse they, Ms. Smallwood and Mr. Herring are not coming and giving you assistance when the council clerk were out for two weeks. You didn't ask for nothing. You didn't want nothing from them. Let's be honest, you didn't want no help from them. But then when you get your back against the wall and you mess up, then you want to blame them. You said four council members, you didn't bother them because they were working, day job. The only council I know that got, it definitely got a day job is Ms. Easton, Mr. Herring and Ms. Ferguson. I don't know where the fourth one come from. But nothing's stopping you from asking no for. You said they are senior citizen. Ms. Easton is a senior, I mean, a senior representative. Mr. Williams, a guy, a lot of, he was a mayor one time. And you don't ask them for help. But then when you, when you mess up or things go wrong, you're going to blame them. Right is right, wrong is wrong. If you can't do the job, you need to step down, simple plain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, here, with that said, thank you, citizens, for coming on to this budget hearing, the special regular budget hearing. Our special, not special, but our regular meeting will be Monday, and I'll look for all of you then. With that, it is now nine o'clock and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Oh my God, he's a joke. Oh, my mic is still on. Oops. Oops.
Let me handle this meeting.